It will call the November seventeenth. You can get lost in the downtown for a quick ride because it's not unfollowed by like the police.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll coffee.
Councilmember Alexander, here. Councilmember Brandon, here. Councilmember Brinker, here. Councilmember Conflit, here. Councilmember Missouri, here. Councilmember Stevenson, here. Mayor Law.
Here. Approval of minutes in the November third regular meeting.
Another approval.
Motion for floor and set a question for common. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conflit, yes. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, there. Mayor Law.
Yes. All the comments and requests, any comments from residents or its intact parents? Four B closure of Leather Alley for citizens annual Christmas tree sale.
This is the first reading of the request from Citizens Hoes Company for their annual Christmas tree sale on Leather Alley. And that is the fortune from Belkund Avenue to Stone Alley, which is the little alley in between Citizens Hoes and Dogs.
Do I have a motion?
I will second.
I commend them this year for getting her letter in before the Christmas tree sale.
That's what I was thinking.
They're right, they're right on. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conflit, yes. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Four C closure of the East Main Street parking lots, Little Lot for the Rob Holiday concert.
Tyler Bar is requesting the use of East Main Street parking lot on December twelfth from one thirty to seven thirty for their annual holiday concert. And approved, I'll coordinate with Tyler, Chief Booker, and Department of Public Works to ensure the lot is closed, electricity is set up. And we're also working to make coordinate traffic for that section as well on Main Street in case there's any kids running across the street. And you do have Tyler here as well.
Good evening. I just wanted to come and finally ask council and Mayor Law for permission to use the parking lot for our annual concert. And as always, we plan to partner with Downtown Lock Haven Businesses to get kids to visit as many shops and restaurants as they can over the weekend. If they visit five store locations, they bring that in one day and then their tickets get entered into a prize drawing for partnering with visiting downtown. So it's a great weekend for us and the reason it's one thirty is that we get the parking lot set up and the concert will begin at five thirty.
Thank you. Let's get an asset. Motion.
I will second.
Motion for floor and second. Thank you for doing that. I attended and I read your base. It's always a great time when the kids are. Anyone else comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conflit, yeah. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Do we have any other requests?
I don't know, Your Honor.
Okay. So we have the public hearing on the proposed budget. We'll move into that. The purpose of the hearing is to afford the public an opportunity to comment and make observations on the recommended budget. We have tonight's comments from agencies and organizations with Public Works.
Public Works is here this evening and we go in a particular order of Sewer, then General Fund, Public Works Administration, and then the Water Fund. I do want to point out for those playing along at home, if you go online, you can find the budget book and that is underneath public notices and it'll be the first thing on that page that you can click on. The budget this year does feature a variety of expenses that the city has been planning for many years that help improve the quality of life as we wrap up. One project, it seems like we're already, we're already starting another. The good news overall about some of the information at the front, the median household is on page twelve. And that is a particular location on North Fairview Street this year. And that is always chosen as the house that they pay the median, or median real estate tax in the city. So it changes year to year. Nice information this year to highlight on that. For the median household in the city of Lock Haven this year, they are able to afford the median rent, which is a marked improvement. And household income, just as a side note, is up seventy-one percent from where it was ten years ago. And the median home values are up thirty-nine percent over the same decade. But on to Public Works. So if you turn to page sixty-six, that is giving it the sewer fund. And Dave Sorden, who's the superintendent of Sewer, is here this evening. He also oversees the industrial pretreatment and the sewer treatment plant itself, along with the chief operator. So Dave, we're on our eleventh year of the new plant, hopefully thirty-nine more to go. You know, we gotta get our fifty out of that concrete. Just going good. Replaced a lot of bearings this year. Got a new IT instrumental technician, Matt Stover. He's very prob- good problem solver. I guess I found a lot on a lot of stuff. Next year, we're going into new screens and new UVs. Be good to get that up and running. People are after them clean. The ultraviolet disinfectant system that we currently have is outdated and we're no longer able to get parts for it. So. But it is working very good. Yes, it is not. I know Mr. Stevenson asked that at a previous meeting one time. It is still doing a very good job. It's just can't get parts no more. And the parts that were getting rebuilt, we can either rebuild them so many times, it's electrical. They get downloaded after that. But it's still a very good functional system. It's probably our major improvement next year. Penn Vest funding will be applied for and like everything with the wastewater treatment plant, about forty-five percent is city of Lock Haven wastewater. The rest comes from all customers who are partner municipalities like Castania, Flemington, East Nittany, Boyward. And they each pay a percent of total. They were informed earlier in this year that that would be an upcoming expense so that they could prepare in advance for that. We will be going in the spring for that application to Penn Vest. And then pretty much the engineers have done most of the work to get us to the point where we can implement that as quickly as possible. That'll be a big relief too, especially the instrumentation tech crew and Dave. Fewer things to have to repair and get back to preventative maintenance program.
What's timeframe on that? When do you expect that to happen?
I can't proceed work till April or something. Right. We can start work after we make the initial contact. Well, we did initial contact with Penn Vest, but we haven't made the official application. And so that'll be really in the first quarter that we'll make that application to Penn Vest. Once we get to their next meeting after that, we would get hopefully their approval. And at that point, we can start to expend funds. Fortunately, we do have enough on hand in the sewer fund to not do interim financing for Penn Vest, which is reimbursable. So we have to pay the bill in order to get it reimbursed by Penn Vest about thirty days later. But there will be enough fund balance in the Sewer Capital Project Fund, Fund Thirty-Eight, to carry that without having to take on debt service.
Questions?
Greg, under the heading of ten one thirty-four, under wastewater treatment, see it jumped, it says Foreman. What did you change around? It went from sixty-one thousand one hundred and forty-three. Are you calculating differently than?
We added one back in.
You added a Foreman back in?
Right. So it's been a couple of years since we had an instrumentation tech down at the sewer plant. And so now that we were able to get one back on board, it does increase that cost.
Okay. And it was instrumentation tech. And now with electricity, I see, did you use a percentage?
I did.
Calculate that to the proposed?
I did. So the percentage increase, I did use the nationwide expectation averages for heating fuel, natural gas, and for electric. And then, of course, the city water costs could go up exponentially because of the rate change because we are a commercial customer.
So the solar field will help offset those costs. We have that in our sights coming to help get rid of some of this almost four hundred thousand dollars of electric costs just in the sewage treatment plant.
I just printed that out today and update came from Tangent Energy. They expect to be going to bid during the winter. And they do expect to have everything installed and online by the end of twenty-six, but it won't have an impact on the budget until twenty-six.
Will the rate increase, cost of electricity? Can we say solar should be paying us more to help? It's worth more? Will we, or will we have to renegotiate that?
Or contract was that?
Yeah, we just, we just did the, not renewal, but amendment to the contract.
Paying them more, I think they should be paying us more for, for the electricity we're generating because it's worth.
It still is. I don't want to put an exact figure because it's not right in front of me, but I believe we're going to be paying them point oh five five per kilowatt hour. And right now we pay point oh seven eight. So that rate from constellation is not going to go down. But you now have a thirty-year guarantee of point oh five five from solar, which is significantly better than the electricity that we're getting through P P N L. So it does have a long-term cost savings because once that number's in there, it's going to be pretty consistent for a couple of decades. That's it for me. Thank you.
Any last questions?
Thank you, Sue. Just real quick, maybe you can clarify the legal expense in thirty-one four hundred.
Is that forty-nine?
Yeah, I'm the same page.
Yeah, it's pretty big jump.
Twenty-four hundred to one eighty-three now.
I thought, I thought we paid that.
I'm gonna, I like that because that's a significant typo because.
I like typos.
I like typos. You're talking about sixty-seven?
Yeah.
I'm looking at seventy, seventy-two. Seventy also.
It's the same, yeah.
It says, you don't have all the other years on here, like my giant spreadsheet, but that's going to be a multi-year average. So that includes time periods that we were in lawsuit. So that will come to a more palatable number like two thousand five hundred.
Easy or small?
I have the same question. I was like, is what I had marked is.
Any other questions? Yeah.
I do have a question. I, so I know our health insurance jumped significantly this year. Did all of our other insurance also jump or are those guestimates of what we think they're going to be?
What you're seeing in this budget is an estimate that puts two percent more into those line items. They did actually just come in last Friday and they are just about two percent more. So their line items are scattered throughout all the budgets.
Yeah.
So they do change slightly from what's in there, but generally speaking, they're going to be about the same. And that's true with property, liability, auto, and cyber, we do have tangible figures on it, which we did not when this was done. So that'll change slightly as well. Cyber mostly has an impact on water and sewer.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thanks, David.
Nice.
We will jump to age thirty-six now. General Fund Public Works, in general, we still are investing one percent a year in employee training. A lot of that is through LTAP and other means that we go, I think we did a Boroughs Association training as well this year. This is probably the heaviest for operations cost, but you can see why. That includes things like salt and street paving, things like that. Jared Guest, who's the superintendent of General Fund Public Works, is here tonight. Somewhere there, I mean, and so his budget includes not only the administration, which is he and the Public Works clerk, but it also includes those costs like training and garage-related expenses that are the building itself, not the supplies beyond operational supplies, which are not vehicle fuel or oil. Those are paper towels and things like that. Restrooms up there. What you been up to, Jared?
All right. So just a little over six months into this, I'm still, still learning. But we've done a lot of, I think, good things in a very good direction up there in the past six or seven months. We finished phase three A of Pines, where I was up, helped Carter out with that. And we found a few ways to save, save a few bucks up there, doing some things, you know, a little bit helps. We did, like Greg said, we did do some safety trainings this year. We did some chainsaw safety trainings, was a big one. We did not necessarily on the safety training, but we just had a training about a month or so ago for the sewer camera, mainline camera. So as we start adding to our new map systems that our GIS tech John Hart has been putting together, we're now able to attach videos, pictures, stuff like that. So if your collections guys are busy flushing, doing other things, we have other city employees that can go out, like Kyle's crew and do storm sewer. Matt's crew that can do the levy, pipe inspection and stuff like that. So I thought it was a good idea to give everybody a good handful of knowledge to get them started on that. I just applied for a grant trying to do some repairs on Glen Road. Hopefully that works out. It's going to be a multi-year project. Because they only, I did about fifty-three thousand a year for that. So we're probably looking probably about a quarter million dollars to do everything that needs done correctly up there. But that's pretty much, we just implemented a new software program, Biolitics. It rates our paving and street signs. Yes, it's, it's the last few pages of the council packet. So I just did a quick turnout of what we have just to kind of give you a little taste of what it's capable of doing. We haven't done the full city yet, but I'd say it's probably ninety percent done. But as you look at it, the reds are not good. We have a lot of reds. Based on a scale of one to five, we have a lot of four and halves and fives. But it also does our street signs. I didn't print out the street sign layer just because it looks like a jumbled.
Already shot. Because this is already shot.
But it's, it's a jumbled up mess. I talked to Greg. Once we get through budget season in the next year, I'd like to come in and bring my surface in and I can put it on the screen for you and kind of go around and show you. I mean, every street sign, every, they're working on doing like water valves. You can see the storm sewer sanitary inlets. It will tell you the low, they're high, they're cracked. We're going to try, attempt to run a sweeper schedule next year, early mornings, because it also will pick up inlets. But because we have on-street parking, it doesn't get all of it because there's cars parked there. But they're, they're implementing stuff with curving and this program also connects with our Esri files that we have, that John Hart does with all the GIS mapping through shared files. They're able to use stuff back and forth. So eventually we will be able to have maps with all of their information as far as main lines, service lines, stuff like that. Be able to move it back and forth between all the maps. So it's a pretty good program, pretty easy to use, work order capabilities came with it. So I think it's, it's going to be very user-friendly, very easy.
They were vendor last year's minus belief summon. So those who went probably did see their table. We did kind of quick presentation there with them and then set up for Jared to meet with them and most of the people from Public Works have a conversation, Jared working with them. And them really wanting to see Lock Haven be part of the program got us a really tremendous discount on the software. And as they continue adding to its capabilities, like Jared said, and it starts to pick up more stormwater infrastructure, that's going to be incredibly helpful for us. But it, it does kind of make a data-driven way to come up with where are the areas that need the greatest improvement. And a lot of that will have to do with the integrating into Esri where we know we have sewer lines, stormwater, and water that may need to be upgraded. Those can be come higher priority areas, especially now with stormwater management, being able to do the curbing and gutters in those areas. And everyone paying their percent of total then makes many, many more projects doable. And I think people will start to see this coupled with stormwater, some significant impacts in the next couple of years where projects are really going to stand out and be noticed.
Are, are we, we delve into a little bit the stormwater feed? Are we already making plans for when projects like that are going to be happening?
So a lot of that comes down to getting the engineers list refined into the customer list that we have. And that will be the determining factor on when the collections can happen. We do have projects lined up already. One of those would be the Active Arts Court or Jordan's Alley. We know different versions of pricing for that, depending on how we want to move forward with the project. If NELTA wants to do it as a complete repave compared to tar and shit, you know. But yeah, those kinds of projects do exist. We have numerous, especially stormwater projects that kind of have been sitting and waiting, where curves are missing, places like that. That we can make an impact with that, that feed when it starts to come in.
I've been around town. I know some of the road is bad. I'd hate to see one of these for eastern Pennsylvania somewhere. I can't imagine they have anything. Any questions for?
No.
No?
Well, okay. Norm Wolfen came in last meeting two weeks ago and asked about Hampton Street. Has anybody been on there?
Yes.
Parking on it?
Yes, that's.
Have we done anything?
Yeah.
Well, did you go look at it?
Yeah. Yes. And there are many streets that are in his situation. So that's one of the things on for twenty-twenty-six and here that John and I are going to get together. And because we also think that's a good thing to have our maps. We have all of our right-of-ways down there. But right-of-way is not the cart path. So we're also going to go around and get measurements curb to curb. And that way, that's just another thing that we have on our map. But I think you're going to see that list grow significantly as far as, as street width and parking. I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. But yeah, it's, it's, we've got great information and it's, it's.
Yeah, there's a, there's a nuance to it where you start on one end of that street, you can get parking on both sides and two lanes of traffic. And the farther you go up that street, the more narrow it becomes. So yeah, you can do two lanes of traffic and no parking in some areas, parking on one side and others. But yeah, when, when Nora brought that up, it went immediately that we did it.
Okay. You're right, Jared. Sometimes the right-of-way is there, but we've only filled out to a certain width.
Right.
And, and maybe somebody's mowing the grass on our right-of-way first. Maybe we should.
And most of them are larger. Because most of the right-of-ways, I shouldn't say most, some of them include the sidewalks. It, it just depends. John and I were looking at it a little bit. We were trying to figure like, okay, this is how it was done. The more we looked at it, the more confused we got. So we're like, well, we're just going to start from scratch and we're going to do our own thing. And you know, just like I said, feel like that's a benefit to have, especially since a lot of the ordinance is with parking, where you can park all that stuff is based on the street width, not necessarily foot.
You might count, you have.
I, I'm just curious, how does the Esri surf or software work? Do you just throw on top of a car with the, like your GoPro, you know, like?
The Esri or the BioLetics?
The BioLetics.
Okay. So there's multiple ways to do it, but it's all done through an iPhone.
Okay.
And it's just an app on the iPhone. They have different ways to do it. We started out with a windshield mount that you mounted inside the car. But we weren't thrilled with the images we were given.
Right.
So they said, well, we can try a hood mount. So we mount it on the hood that sticks up about yay high and it has all these different gadgets and everything. You can turn it and stuff. And let me tell you, when I did that, the looks that I got in town, like people about snapped their necks because they're wondering what's going on. But that definitely the, the images were a lot clearer. And I think it was just because you weren't spanning the hood of the car or hit the asshole. But it's all done with an iPhone. And then they're, they're in the process of combining the two apps, but there's an app to take the information. And then there's the app which you can view it in. And most of our employees have downloaded that app. So when I or any of the foreman would put a work order in, say Kyle would put a work order in for a pot more, he no longer has to go out and do that. Even literal, it's with the click of a mouse and it takes about ten seconds to do it. And it will go right to their phone and send them alert through a text message that this is there. And then pending, we haven't done it yet, there, they have the option to either send it back to him and then he goes in and clicks it and says it was done, or they can actually click on it and say, yep, we did it. And he gets a notification that the work order been. So it's actually, like I said, it's very, very user-friendly, very easy for anybody to use. You don't have to be a computer genius to figure it out. I'm not a computer genius or a technician by any means. And if I can figure it out, anybody can.
And follow-up, you said we got a discount because we're, we're early. How long does the discount last for and where is that in our budget?
You're going to see it under computer software fees.
Isn't that saying sound the bar?
Yeah. So it will actually be in Fund fourteen.
Fund fourteen as well as the general fund.
The computer software.
Thirty-five twenty-eight is um what we paid for the entire system this year. And then the annuals are less, less than a thousand dollars.
So don't call me on the word that like ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
Reduction.
Like we got the equipment itself for free. Um, we didn't have to pay for the iPhones, the mounts. So, yeah.
Uh, how long do we have that rate for?
Yeah, so you pay the annual maintenance fee and then you get the upgrades with it, fortunately. But the annual maintenance fee is significantly less than the onboarding. And so, yeah, it uh. Really has a long-term impact, but then now we'll go back to the league. When we feel confident enough to rave about it and tell everybody, oh, don't you have a?
And the end goal is like we were saying, once we can overlap it, then when we come to council and say, okay, this year we wanna. Pay these streets, we can say, we wanna pave these streets because here's the assessment from the asphalt. But underneath of that, here's the camera, the video of the camera going through the sewer line and it's cracked, got roots going through it. And that piece is missing. And then you can watch the one of the storm sewer that says the whole bottom of the pipe is out of it, like it was on the section that replaced up plumbing. So it's kind of like a justification for when we say, oh, we're gonna spend a million dollars on one city block. It shows everything, the, the justification of the why, more or less.
Does that have an asphalt or a asphalt history pavement thing like layered? Where it start how thick the base is and then of the stone compacted and base material and. When you mill it off and then you put it back on, does it create a history, a profile? If you look at the, like the side of the road and it can, well, in nineteen ninety eighty-five, we did this to it.
Well, yes, not necessarily a profile, but every time we drive the street, which they recommend twice a year. Um, it creates a historical database. So we can go in and say, okay, we want to look at um segments from. You know, twenty twenty-five and, and we can say, okay, now I'm gonna look at segments from twenty twenty-eight. And you can compare the two, like, like, once, once you drive the road a second time, the data from the first time doesn't go away. It's all still in there, so you can see.
Looking at the surface of it, I was talking a full-depth profile. So you know the history of it, is there no base under it? Or should you consider putting a base under it or should? Sometimes you get a bad fade job. A couple of years later, it jumps up on the list over something that should have been paved ten years later. Just because of the.
Any other questions? Thank you. So can we come up and see it?
If we weren't, like I said, once we get out of budget season, next year when things kind of, there's a law, I'll bring my circus in and I'll pull it up and I can. Do like a fifteen-minute thing where you can see how neat it is.
We're on to streets and Kyle Dale is here, Foreman of Streets and Stormwater. And we've had time to talk about streets, but Kyle oversees maintaining thirty-one miles of streets and nine miles of hours.
There you go. Lots to do, um that's for sure. Busyish year, continuing to um identify and assess some areas of storm sewer that. Need repairs or that's future or whatever. Obviously, the upgraded traffic signal and that second half, Elkhorn Avenue and Martin Street, it's completed. Um, much nicer, definitely with the new signals, it's gonna lower our maintenance costs drastically. We have yet to have very many problems with any of the new signals. Continue making some of the railways themselves, film models. Excuse me, whatever that may be, um continue making some minor upgrades to failing storm sewer pipe where we could. Like Jared already touched on, the old guy said it's so imploding. It's imploding, but it does carry on the city's water. There'll be some future improvements even there as well. Um, as far as things for next year, definitely looking at a lot of. The pavement markings downtown, all over the city, whether it's crosswalks, stop bars. Parking stalls, whatever, a lot of what we're beginning to, to fade drastically and, and the touchdown. Um, implementing some stormwater features for identification for the Violetx system. That'll all be based off of drainage basins throughout the city to give them future activities or whatever for us. For the software. So you touched on the Glen Road already. Hopefully we get started one night up there. In the meantime, we have to do some minor work in-house to existing conditions there for, for better drainage.
The first phase is actually treatment.
Yeah.
For Glen Road, so don't expect any dramatic paving difference. Um, just trying to pull back the trees to.
Up the bank?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three.
Yeah, be nice to open it up though and get the sun on the road.
Yeah, yeah.
The water's, water's the worst part of it, so.
Well, the springs up here are all running down.
Yes.
Got it in the inlets and get the pipes to run, let it go across, under the road. A lot of times they use curb paving to pave the curb when they're paving, they have a, and that keeps it in the runway. That's good. Glen Road's not a high-traffic area, but it is a headache.
Obviously, looking forward to paving, I share a lot of the same improvements throughout town.
Yeah, that, if we wanna touch on that, if you turn to. The Highway Aid Fund, which is page seventy-five. That's where. Right, so you'll see that uh North Third Street, North Fork and Race Street. Um, are included in the use of liquid fuels next year. The city has spent since twenty nineteen, one point five million on upgrades using liquid fuels. To stormwater and streets and Sunset Pines. Um, this year, the focus will turn to these areas and then, of course, um there isn't much less left. Next year, ninety-six hundred dollars in the liquid fuels, but uh fortunately, every year that does come in. And so we can help subsidize some other projects in the future, especially with stormwater.
Did you say Race Street's in, in uh Highway Eight? I thought we moved it over to Block Grant.
It is still in Block Grant. It's also in here because we need a buffer, because those estimates were a year old.
Well, yeah, that's the only thing, the paving mobilization in a short block, they're gonna kill you.
Questions for Kyle?
Uh, on the second, on the page forty, is this a new category, street cleaning out of the general fund all by itself? No, it, is it, it's been taken out of something else and now making its own.
So, street cleaning in the general fund has been in there. Um, and so now that's gonna be incorporated into the stormwater fund fourteen below.
Okay.
And so uh you can see four thirty-one in the department column under stormwater costs.
Yes.
Uh, really, it's just labor and benefits that go in there, so they're coming out of the. Regular general fund and going into the stormwater fund fourteen.
So if I wanna see twenty-six proposed, I have to look in the general fund board?
No, you have to look in the stormwater fund right over there.
Underneath it?
Yeah.
Well, it's only, there's only one thing there.
Fourth thirty-one, you'll see full-time personnel shift differential and FICA.
Let's look at the fund fourteen.
And those have no dollar.
Another question? No, so that's stormwater fund, there's no twenty twenty-five there or year-to-date?
So that has not been to compare to. That's another thing where everybody's wage is accounted for in the budget, but as an estimate. So we don't estimate people's four thirty-two, um which is the snow plowing. And we don't estimate four thirty-one, that's actually in four thirty-eight. So when department four thirty-eight streets, so when they work instead in these categories. Four thirty-six, four thirty-one, four thirty-two, those will be accounted for at that time. The guys, when they do their time sheets every day, put down which departments they've worked in. So those get adjusted every single payroll and then they're paid, whether it's regular time or overtime, goes into the right place. So when you look at the four thirty-six rates that are listed in there, those are accounting for both four thirty-one and four thirty-six. In the end, they'll come out at or below the four thirty-six of our present.
Do you have something in equipment maintenance fund for equipment maintenance that jumped up pretty big? Do you have something that needs repaired or? It's like ten thousand more than last year. So you must have something in mind. Forty-five two hundred.
You're, you're jumping ahead of it.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be the next.
They didn't say that, it's a top, so I thought it was still under the. That there was a total. Uh, no.
I just, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I, I just notate that we are anticipating, we're spending a hundred and six thousand dollars. On the lighting costs for street lighting, so that's our electric bill for our streetlights. It is on page thirty-nine.
Yes.
That is, that is what we pay.
Yeah.
Have we lived it solid?
So based off the numbers of lamps?
Yeah, we have different, different ways we pay. Um, some are flat per month. And so those will be adjusted based on electric costs that we pay. Keep you in, every grade hole down here costs exactly the same dollar. So we pay that to them for a year. Uh, we pay a flat rate based on the Christmas decorations that go downtown. Those have to be turned in with a calculation of how much wattage each light uses and what we intend to plug into it. And then we have other areas that do have meters, like the summer concert area. Um, we have actual meters in some places. Uh, obviously at the, at the plant, but most of the streetlights are not metered. They are.
It's just per light.
Per light.
Money, right? I mean, it's like a group of ones.
Right, and so this, this is um estimated using the national. Estimate for the increased cost of electric for next year. And, and so um you do see a big jump there. Everything has been converted except for a couple of things to LED. And so um six or seven years ago, we saw a huge plummet in the cost, but now it just keeps creeping.
Will that be something that when our solar field is done, that will reduce that cost too or?
It really kind of is made to offset the, the wastewater treatment plant, but um. I think, you know, there's a maximum amount that you can get out of it every day that. It does have an impact on other meters.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to look at like a cost-benefit analysis of solar versus, yeah, non-solar lights and. The cost of it, if we, yeah.
Yeah, we have looked at solar before, as Steve knows, down at Memorial Park. Um, our hours of. Of light don't provide the appropriate lumens compared to electric. And so you put up a light that basically you can see that it's on, but you're not gonna have.
It is pretty gray here a lot in the winter, so I can see that be an issue.
We did look at a wind turbine streetlight. Um, they actually are made in Germany. And are used regularly there. And on the levee especially, that would be great because there's always breeze. However, the, the import um shipping cost on that makes it cost pretty. So just per light was about eight hundred dollars per pole to have them brought in, so. It was just not feasible. But we're always looking for new tech.
Other questions? Anyone else have any, public property, page forty-two?
Yeah, that's when I left the county, I'd be done talking at these other things, but. Here we are. Uh, I know this year I kinda jumped in the middle of the busiest time of year, when I got hired, so I kinda hit the ground running, so to speak. Uh, but some of the big things we did get done this year, we were, we were able to uh test the levy instructors in case of flooding event. Uh, we definitely, actually, we just had a full inspection of all three reservoir sites. Uh, recently we spent a lot of time over at Zindel Park Keller, as well, clearing all the debris and the brush to make sure. Um, putting all the marks for inspections, I can say, for the reservoirs and for the levy inspection we had back in July, I think. The army came to visit there, very impressed with how we are doing with our upkeep and things. Uh, we spent a lot of time at Hover Park this summer following renovation projects, trying to save some. Time and money, taking down a ball field of fences, and right now we're putting up another pavilion over by the multipurpose court. And we're gonna place it only one this spring. Uh, like I already spoke about the levee, it's kind of an always never-ending uh. Thing we're taking care of, whether it's the trash, mauling, or different things we do. The levee's kind of the. Big uh, I don't know what the word is, but everyone kinda comes to the levee a lot, but it's time of year, so we try to make that thing as nice as possible. Uh, for our twenty twenty-six objectives, they all kind of stem from what we accomplish in twenty twenty-five. Uh, big main part of it being just maintaining everything that we have. And when you're out there melting all the fields and you're mowing spriggy and the reservoirs. You gotta lose sight of how much property you actually have to maintain. Uh, I wanna give a compliment to both Trapper and Ryan, are two cool damn guys. You were here before I came, they kinda, on top of teaching me everything and the ins and outs of the job, they uh were able to do their job for the whole summer, so. Goodness of them. Unless anybody has any questions, it's kind of lying.
I will add, the levee is largest property owner in the city of Law Haven. The flood authority, the city itself, I think, is fourth on the list. So this is a lot of real estate to keep your eyes on. Steve, this is probably the best example on one page where you can see the way that an employee's wages are split. Because you're gonna see in levy flood control and in park maintenance, if you add together full-time personnel. That's everybody in that crew that is a full-time employee and not a supervisor. And so you can add these two together and see what the personnel costs are. Because we do try to estimate them to some degree, but again, it comes in a little bit different at the end of the year. Because of the way they actually physically spend their time. But we do try to split them uh percent of total between those two, so that we can show the value of the time spent in parks. For maintenance during the budget time.
No question. Let me go back to the, now down to the question that you had earlier that you dumped ahead. Yeah, I didn't know. Well, see, I thought Matt was under the public property and of park maintenance.
Yes. Page forty-three is.
And I was asked about page forty-one.
Ah, right, fair enough. That's.
I really don't have anything from that, except for I know tomorrow, are you still taking the levy advisory board on a tour?
I know a few people.
Educate them about.
Some people have dropped out because of the cold weather, so I think we might just push it to the spring.
But you don't have to get out.
If you wanna see a levy aid function, if you wanna open a couple of them, show them inside. Some people backed out, so we kind of thought it might be very stupid and spring when it's warmer.
Matt's been very amiable to them and and accommodating. He's changed his schedule a couple of times now to. Take them on a tour and educate them about. Instead of just seeing it on paper, he will take and let them look at it and explain.
Most people walk the two and a half miles. They never see that it's six miles. That the entire structure goes.
Turn it to page forty-one. I'm sorry, do you have an introduction for?
Okay, um, I'm Dave Demko, I'm uh the maintenance and uh. Supervisor up at the DPW garage. So for twenty twenty-five. Um, I'll start off with the accomplishments and basically. The uh DPW garage is back to an active status in state inspection stations. To where we can inspect all of our vehicles in-house. We don't have to sub them out anymore. Basically, we incur extra costs and travel time and labor to transport vehicles outside vendors for this work. We don't have to do that and we can do it all in-house. So um. Kudos to to Jared. He had the inspection station updates and upgrades in process when I started. Um, I just came in, filled in a few missing pieces and made it fully functional. So um. A a big plus to do that all in-house. Uh, as I mentioned prior, we can now inspect all vehicles in-house. There was an issue with some of the large leaf collection trucks. And they physically wouldn't fit into the garage for years and years, but sub those out. So um during a. Overhead door minor repair, we're able to adjust the door opening height and get these trucks in. So now we don't have to sub anything. So we can put everything in the garage. Uh, another thing, I started what I'll refer to as a living document of vehicle conditions and replacement planning. This was accomplished with working Greg and Jared and. Uh, it's going to be on a revolving three-year plan. So we're looking at vehicles, we're looking at. A couple of years down the road as far as replacements and conditions and things like that. Not get blindsided at last minute to replace something. So, um. Another thing I did, I created an information base on all the trailers based at the DPW. That include full vehicle descriptions and cannibal information. There's a lot of stuff up there. We didn't have clear records on, so that's one thing I'm kind of putting in place and. Gathering all the information on that. And we did some updates on uh DPW garage tooling for safety reasons and did some cost-effective purchasing. For vehicle maintenance materials, bulk oils, things like that. So, um, that's what I've been up to since June, so. Things for twenty twenty-six. Um, continue operating safe working environment, obviously. Uh, continue cost-effective initiatives in all areas of vehicle and building maintenance where applicable. Uh, example, cost comparisons, vendors who can respond quickly when necessary. And we also did a little bit of uh personal technical training. For the two of us up at the garage operation. And that pretty much helps across the boards with vehicle repairs. Um, another thing is continue vehicle evaluations and re-planning equipment purchases. With Jared and Greg based on department needs and budgets. And I think that cumulative effort and timing just leads to smart purchases across the boards. You know, just hearing from. From uh getting different. Uh, views from from those two and myself, I think that. That's gonna lead to smart purchases, so. And as always, explore new areas of cost savings initiatives and as opportunities arise.
The city has. Loaned itself the money. Out of the capital projects fund. To purchase several different vehicles and some have been through leases with the bank, but. As. Interest rates crept up, the opportunity for the city to make that interest itself and even. Um, is sometimes too good to resist. So um, we did pay off a couple of those um. Vehicles and so we pulled those out of fund sixteen and now they appear appear in fund twenty-one. Which is on that same page forty-one, that's the inter-fund loan. And so you can see the vehicles that were purchased this year to replace ones that would not pass inspection. And then the top three on um Dave's list and assessment. For the ones that really are the highest priority to replace next year. Um, are listed here with their estimates to uh what they will cost to replace. There are two different line items for each one. Three, four, one is the interest income. Three, eight, nine is the return of the principal to the fund. Right now, everything's on a three-year. Um, we can go as long as five-year for um. A lease under the local government unit debt act. Um, these don't actually count the same as if we went to the bank. Um, reportable wise, but. It still is something that we audit the same way as if it were a bank report. So each of those uh different debt services are now in amortization schedules. They're provided to the auditors who review to make sure we're on point, that we're actually paying the bills on time. Um, all of that is handled on a monthly basis by the accounts payable clerk and then. Uh, part of the regular bank reconciliations to make sure the money changed. So. So four, four, five. It's the three-year average. So sometimes it does go up, sometimes it does go down. We do have, um, again, a couple of vehicles we should replace that we will not be replacing. Uh, just because of the cost right now. So we'll have to wait till next year. They will still pass inspection, but they probably will have some costly repairs.
Yeah, it just uh, cause of equipment maintenance, it just jumped so much, it jumped out at me to. To go from. Ninety-five hundred, ninety-six hundred to nineteen. So there has to be something needs fixed or. You're trying to piece together something or you're buying a spreader for something or?
No, again, it's the three-year average from prior years, but that doesn't include this year. So it's twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Okay.
Average together.
Yeah, it doesn't show down. Just because you haven't, that's what we need to spend everything. Cause that's what it shows from last.
I think every one of these people. Is very familiar with that.
Any other questions?
Go to water fund, you're ready, your honor?
Yes, sir.
And that is page fifty-six. We have Hunter Stover here.
Good evening, Alan.
Good evening. So twenty twenty-five, we updated some of the monitoring systems in the home station. Along with updated a bunch of meters and radios to read them remotely. Also compared about two hundred and fifty in-home lead and copper inspections per D E P. Out of about twenty-six hundred, which there are about six hundred remaining. And we also completed a system-wide leak detection. As of currently, there were sixty-nine leaks repaired throughout the year with a total of six new connections. And twenty twenty-six, I hope to still continue updating the pump stations and P R Vs and the. March for monitoring system, still look to continue to work on the lead and coppers inspections. Along with the assessing for line replacements, which there are a few of. Continue system-wide leak detection after we've blocked, along with this year, we painted all of the city hydrants to start per N F P A code. And we continue to update meters and radio reads, but this year we are going to a new meter. Which actually leak detect and are cheap. So instead of physically going out to homes and like detecting, these meters will be able to do it twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five.
We are. Well, we have on hand.
Yes.
Um, the large meters, let's say, um, some of the oldest and largest meters could be replaced. And you're working in with first quality starting.
Yes, I'm starting to measure tomorrow. Actually, we are waiting on some gaskets and some space room, but as soon as they come in. Hopefully, all thirty will be installed.
End of issue?
Yes.
Fantastic.
And then we can look at ordering some smaller house help ones and they'll be strategically placed around the blocks. Try and leak detect whole areas versus.
That's great. Good news. Thanks.
So if you look at water distribution, page fifty-nine. Oh, it's that one you were gonna ask about?
Yeah. But I think we just answered my question. My increased number is to buy those customer water meters.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So um, that does include the industrial meters as well that we were talking about. Um, and that amount. Would be a reimbursable from the proceeds you'll receive from the Lock Haven City Authority. Um, when its assets are transferred back. So that hundred and six thousand dollars um. Will be from their capital projects fund. That comes back and that will enable all of the. Uh, really the oldest meters in our system and to be replaced. And that does include one in Lock Haven University that was more than thirty years old.
So. How does that fit into where we're on account for water and what and where are we at with that?
So. The unaccounted-for water is unbilled for.
Yes.
And so the older the meters are, the less accurate they are. So switching these meters, all of which are over twenty years old.
Right.
Will get us much more accurate figures. That means that our consumption will not go down. But the money to. Right, will go up and it will be statistically accounted for. And so, um.
When we have any results on where that puts us out, how much we we captured from unaccounted for.
It would be.
When the meter is going.
Yeah, between when the meter goes in and when its first reading is for the first quarter. Will show us the difference in consumption.
The meter is going into the houses. Uh, that might tell you that the house has a leak, but how's it gonna tell you the system has a leak?
It'll actually leak detect outside on the mains as well as in home. So if your toilet is running constantly, that will notify me that there is hearing something. So it is either on our side or your side and we can go out and verify that on which side. They do have results, they have found leaks roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet away for sure. That are just out on the street that have never surfaced, which. We can do that, obviously, but if it doesn't surface or you're saying you're not losing water pressure, it's gonna be a kind of one we get to it throughout the system. This will leak detect three sixty-five or three sixty-five, so. If this is something that it breaks a mill a night, that morning it'll show up red and we can go investigate that day.
So when will you see that? When they go read the meter?
No, it's when it's transmitted. Login and do everything along with the radio read, which is all the remote reading they use to do.
Yeah, the new meters, you can log in daily and get information from them.
Well, I don't hope the people do if they have a leak.
Yeah, and they, I mean, really, they do more and cost less.
Yeah.
And, um, where do you guys find them? Do you have rural water?
Yes, and switching vendors through one where the detection people, they were actually pushing this product. The in-home ones are anywhere between fifty and seventy dollars cheaper, but the industrial ones are. Two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars cheaper with the same size.
Any questions? Yes, it's one of them. Do they have a life expectancy on a few meters?
All of those have a twenty-year battery life. Which is exactly the same as what we're putting. Yep. If anything happens to the battery, it can spend those twenty years to send it back and it'll just.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, comments from residents and tenants? Yes, sir.
I'm here representing Cassidy Township. Uh, Charles Crook Jr. Um, Greg, this is for you for the letter, for the roads we have over there. There were patch, cold patches to the hot mix. Um, our supervisor is not happy with that. And this time council, we would like to tell you that we were putting our sewer. Money to, we owe you for cleaning in an escrow fund. And when the roads are properly taken care of, you'll get your money. Wild patchers anymore. We're tired of it.
Well.
You were sent a letter a long time ago.
Uh, you don't negotiate with me, you would negotiate with council. We received a letter October seventh and responded on October thirteenth.
Yeah.
Your municipality has six locations that we are aware of. As of the date of October thirteenth, the city's patching project will take place in the spring. In fact, it's. Its number has already been assigned because the project's already in the works, which is twenty twenty-six oh one. That will be bid and uh your six locations will be part of the total patching project. Sewer and water are not the same thing. They're completely different funds and uh withholding service from one. For payment. Um. If that's what your municipality. Well. I've said what was in the letter council authorized to be said.
I'm here telling what we feel. How we feel.
Are we doing the same to our excavations here in the city?
Yes, we don't have any that have been patched. Prior to theirs, they're all part of the same project, just like last year.
So when you've been in, you've been Castania and us.
Yes, and.
All at the same time.
Yeah, and we did have, I believe, last year, uh, some wane, but. I don't believe we have any wane this year.
What's your objection, Mr. Crook, that they won't last the winter or that they'll.
Correct.
Correct, make a uh.
Residents the past years had put up with plows, banging all night long, keeping the residents up. We're not gonna put up with it. Bust up a plow, get the bolts, palm frames, cutting edges.
These, these locations aren't from past years. These are this year's.
Some of them from past years are very bad also.
We just did a patching of all those this year. You received that list of those.
Cold patch.
No, permanent patching, it was part of this year's patching project.
I'm telling you, this year is cold patch.
These six I'm aware of are full patch. But last year, we did the permanent patching on. But last year, we did the permanent patching of. So, those have been corrected from whatever someone had an issue within the.
That's true, this year, one other year, another ballgame.
So November twenty-four will be, uh, Public Safety Budget Hearing. September first, Community, Community Life Planning Airport Budget Hearing, and then September eighth will be the adoption of the budget. Those of you who sat in the second hearing.
Yeah, thank you to everybody that's here.
Yes. Appreciate the updates.
You're released if you.
But if you want to stay for the rest of.
Yeah.
We're almost a third of the way down the page.
With the five B consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one-one setting to twenty twenty-six milli rate. And ordinance twenty twenty-five that's called adopting.
Since this is, uh, first reading, there should be no issue with council doing this simultaneously. Um, right now fixing the real estate millage, continuing, um, council's current. Trend on trying to get back to an effective milling rate, which is about, um, eleven point five mils. Uh, shows you the value of improvements compared to the assessed value of land, so general purpose. Mills length will come down to fifteen mils and improvements will go up to ten point nine mils. Currently, uh, we're at nine point eight mils for improvements and twenty for land. So this will bring that down, what that does is change, um, how much everyone owes. Depending on the same formula that's used for your school taxes and your county taxes. Uh, the second portion. Is the total dollar value that the general fund at six point four million. Fire fund at five hundred and seventy-five thousand, water at three million, sewer fund at four point two, airport at two thirty-five thousand. Stormwater fund two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, highway eight, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, for a total of fifteen million, two hundred and four, five, six, three. And obviously, the numbers will change in both of these ordinances likely before they are finally adopted. But as the mayor pointed out, they will be on, uh, discussion for November twenty-fourth, December first, and December eighth.
I'm six A, seven, forty-five, ten, I'm sorry, twenty-five, eleven, yeah, five B, twenty-five, eleven, twenty-five, well.
Thank you.
I'm really rushing this down.
I know, I, I, I wanna get there too, but, alright, I have a second. Uh, questions or comments or votes? Okay, call for the vote.
John?
I'd like to express a concern on the change in the millage rates, I believe that. Taxing improvements at a higher rate discourages investment within the community. Um.
I, I can provide you information on that, the city was one of sixteen municipalities in the nineteen eighties that adopted split rate millage. And the concept was a theory that, uh, if you did what the city did, which Allentown did and. And a variety of others, that you would see substantial improvements built in, especially density. Of improvements and, um, in each of those municipalities, that never came true.
None of them.
None, so none of the sixteen saw that happen. What it creates then is this long-term effect of, of rate that's very confusing to the typical resident. And so, uh, the correction to that, to get to the effective millage. Um, again, is around eleven mils for the city. Um, we'll know more when we get the information from. So, but, um, yeah, that's the same that's being, um, paid. As a millage rate to the school district, that's a single millage, not a split rate, same with the county. And they're still seeing Wawa Walmart gas ago. You know, the same infrastructures being built. Uh, and Wawa isn't not going in because there's, there's a split rate.
I also think that a couple of years ago, we had this conversation about correcting something to come to a single. Rate as opposed to having a.
I disagree, but it's where we go and it's what's happening.
Yeah, we're edging towards just having a single rate.
But I can get you more information, uh, like by email.
I, I about.
Yeah.
Interesting setting, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breakers. Councilmember Cofflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, nothing else on the budget tonight?
Not for me, your honor.
Okay, unfinished to the six A consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-five, ten.
Under the Lock Haven Police Officers Association Agreement with the city, the police officers, uh, will be going to a two percent flat rate. Of their W two earnings to contribute to, um, the police pension fund. That requires an update to the city ordinance, which this provides.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion for a second questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, six B award of the L H V fencing for gates.
So the bids were received for L H V fencing and gates project on September third. Um, and a low bidder by fencing, um, through conversations, a, a immediate change order was had. Just to adjust the layout of the fencing and gates, um, due to site slope and airplane width. So we adjusted the one gates, the larger gates, um, that span, uh. The taxi where, where the multiple hangers are, switched those to thirty-five foot gates. Um, and then adjusted the layout a little bit, so it's more on your side, I did include. The final adjusted layout in your package.
Um, so that information was submitted to the B O A, um, Bureau of Aviation. And the grant was just awarded last week and so we came forward with construction. And kind of approval, um, the. The B O A will contribute one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. To the total project cost of hundred thirty-three, hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, which means our local match would be eighteen thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, and the city has that local share on hand through some borrowing dedicated for airport projects of the past. And just recommend award to five fencing in the amount of hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars. Um, and they'll get started as soon as possible, we can get this done by the end of the year.
Do I have a motion to vote?
I make a motion. I'll second.
Motion and a second question. Questions?
I, when I looked at this, I had just one, the, the significance and the differences of the bids. We've done a, what, like a. A quality review of the low bidder.
Yes, the, the airport engineer, um, did a review of everything, they all actually.
Projects in the past.
Yes, yes, yeah, they have worked with them in the past. And also Phi was one of the three contractors at the pre-con or the pre-bid meetings, the walkthrough, um, which. Is just the added bonus of like their integrity of the project and learning about it and. Um, they did have a good discussion, they have, as I said, McCrory and Johnson has dealt with them in the past and they're, they're in a concerned act.
Yep. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Bricker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Six C, appointment of council members to a zoning and Sado update focus group.
As you know, we're in the process of updating our zoning ordinance and subdivision and lay development ordinance. Um, as part of this, Cindy Walker and I have identified about five focus groups for the project. Um, we really say down to Lock Haven Economic Partnership, City Council and Group of Residents. Um, for the city council group, we would like to have three volunteers, um, between yourselves. Um, to sit on a focus group, it'd be like an hour, hour and a half, hour and a half meeting on, online. Um, to discuss some issues and opportunities, I will say that council member has ordered a court on this hearing thing, so. Anyone outside of her is welcome to volunteer with her.
Hold on.
I can move on now.
Soon they'll be during the day.
We can meet, um, at, at the time it's convenient, like he'll probably send out a to the hall and pick a. They've done, they've done meetings before with, um, this hearing, so.
This year.
Um, they might do them in December. We can do it over break.
I can.
Okay, so. Or me and, yeah.
Yes.
Pammy said she couldn't as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, you need three in addition? So, the three, the three of you in addition to me, I don't count.
Barb can't be.
Doesn't.
That's four.
That's why she doesn't count on that, she's on.
Yeah, I will be, I'm already on the other part of the committee, this is something else.
Okay, so it's Pammy, myself and.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, do we, we need a motion to that?
I make a motion.
Okay. Motion and a second, you know, any questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Six D, authorization for commercial through defense agreement with L A for L H V with Piper Museum.
This is the final of the through defense agreements, um, after discussion with. The Piper Aviation Museum as well as, um, notifying the Bureau of Aviation and F A A. Um, and providing some of the original documentation, quite a bit of, uh. The property that enables the grass runway down at the airport. Is actually the property of the Piper Museum and it's inside the fence that was originally installed. And so, uh, providing that Piper would owe a fee, but that. The, um, use of the land inside the fence creates an obligation of the city in favor of user. Which, in an application of sound business judgment, is equivalent to the access fee or assessed here under. Which is a lawyer's way of saying, we'll waive the fee. So that, uh, we continue to have access to them.
Okay. So we just be authorized to have a motion for them?
I'm making that motion.
Okay. I'll start. Second. Questions?
Finally, thank, thank heavens that it's accomplished, because this is, this has been a long time in the, in the making and I'm really. Glad we stuck with it and good job, Greg, on getting it cross-finished, but it's an accomplishment.
Anyone else? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Six C, authorizing the sludge station bids for the Youngdale Well Field Project.
With the approval of City Council, this Wednesday, we'll start the bidding. For the actual permanent installation of the Youngdale Well Field Project and the pipeline to take that. Well water up to the filtration.
Uh, motion?
Don't move.
I'll second.
Motion for a second, this is all about the wells that we were doing to supplemental water source. Any questions? Uh, any questions about it? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Mayor Law.
Yes, any other unfinished business?
I've done, your honor.
Seven A, consideration of an appointment of Mayor Dusel.
Mar Dusel.
Mar Dusel, thank you, perform the twenty twenty-four fiscal year audit.
Uh, this is a proposal from Mar Dusel. Who I've been in discussion with about being the independent auditor to complete the twenty twenty-four fiscal year audit. In the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars, that's obviously spread throughout several of the city's funds. As well as the pension funds that they will audit. Um, this would, um, be the first year that we're going to use Mar Dusel. Um, to perform this audit, we're still waiting on the twenty twenty-three fiscal year audit to come back from Baker Tilly. As soon as that audit comes back from Baker Tilly, Mar Dusel will be able to begin the twenty twenty-four fiscal year audit.
Can Sir, do you have any ending bounce for it? Uh, do I have a motion to that?
I second.
Motion for a second, questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yeah. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Acceptance of the resignation of Art Sanders from the Ross Library Board and appointment of Faith Rock.
Art Sanders has been on the board, how long did she say, Josh?
He says seventeen years, his daughter says different, we'll say at least fifteen.
But longtime president and of course, I think, uh, longest-serving business owner in the downtown. Art Sanders is resigning from the Ross Library Board after many years, uh, serving the community faithfully there. And the Board of Directors has requested the appointment of Faith Rock to fill the vacancy on the board.
I may make a correction, I believe that is Microsoft Word knowing you, knowing what you wanted to say better, just say Gronk. R O N K.
So R O N K.
It didn't autocorrect.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm not blaming a human, I'm blaming Microsoft Word for that one, that's.
Do I have a motion?
I remember. I second.
Motion for a second, um. Thank Art for his many years. Not many better people in town, honestly, than the guy in St. Louis. So, sad that he's moving on, but. I'm gonna make change and, uh, thank Faith for stepping up, I had a friend of mine. Uh, town who obviously knows this person, he contacted me and gave their ring and order for the appointment of Faith Gronk. To the, uh, the library. Any other questions or comments?
Will Faith's, um. Go into effect then January first, just like Arts would have, is that?
That's all good, I, that's what I was just about to ask, uh, so, well, uh. Art, Art was technically, his, his seat is up at the end of this year, uh, so the motion can include something of like to, to serve. Out the remainder of his and then continue on, or we can come back in January with her as a, with a reappointment. Uh, up to y'all, I mean, it's gonna be one month of service versus.
It will happen both ways.
Yes, we'll do a blanket one in, in January, right, so.
Right, that's fine.
And, any other questions?
I, I just have one comment, if, if anybody, uh, as he said, Art, uh. Art did this with a very heavy heart, um, he, he's a man who needs a little bit more time on his hands. Uh, so if anyone from council, the city, or public sees him in town, please stop, talk to him, thank him. Just bend his ear a little bit because he, he, he really did. I, I, this was a hard decision for him to, to take some time for himself, but it's well-earned, well-deserved and. The board is dearly going to miss him, so.
Then we send him. Special sending him for this time.
And he was a, he, he, he also is a former president and a former treasurer. So not only just as a board member, but an executive committee member as well. So not only just as a board member, but an executive committee member as well, so many years of service.
Alright, call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cofflin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. So I see, request number L H A F P A.
The Lock Haven Area Flood Protection Authority. Um, has requested a contribution. For next year of two thousand five hundred dollars, um, although it does show on here that you can take action on that. It is included in the city budget, so your ultimate action on the city budget. Um, can take the place of that. The other is the letter from the Lock Haven City Authority regarding its annual audit. And uh, having the city pay for the water portion. Of that audit, that was something that council had determined more than a year ago, so it doesn't really need your. Your approval unless council has somehow changed its mind, so. Uh, we'll continue to pay that as council had originally directed.
Okay.
So that also doesn't really need to function.
So we don't need to take action on either one of these things, right?
Correct, your honor.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on any of this? Okay, do we have any other new business?
I have none, your honor.
Anybody have any, you want to bring for council, uh, committee names that you have, or have any, what brand?
I. I don't think we have an update on the executive director for the library yet, but that should be for.
For the.
You have a play of the group.
I just want to uh, uh, express my appreciation uh, to all those that sat on the Air Force Committee. Uh, for these uh, last couple of years trying to get an actual uh, agreement in place and, and the project done and, and. I'll thank you all for all your work.
We also met, uh, the, the water subcommittee met this week, um, to discuss some things down Zindal, some uh. Potential. Um, maintenance, the maintenance agreement with Wayne Township and we had a very productive. Discussion with Wayne Township at that time, that we felt like we had made some big inroads with Wayne Township, so. Good news on that front and also this Saturday at Veterans Park is the Walk with Council. And I'm going to be there and I'll bet Mike his. Because he never misses, bless him that hat.
I, I do want to add, if anyone is available Friday, uh, December fifth at two o'clock in the afternoon at the Clinton County Courthouse. The American two fifty bells across Pennsylvania, unveiling Clinton County's version. Will be down at the courthouse, the featured artist is. Tracy Casey Gum, um, is apparently the name of the artist.
And we're going to be painting a tile at that time. No, we're not, that's different. Oh, that's a different thing, when are we gonna do the tile painting? You didn't, you didn't, we didn't, the city didn't do it.
We did it with Taiwan.
But we're gonna do one for the city, you're in charge of that, yeah, okay.
That's completely different than the giant.
Alright, but I'll be going.
Replica of the Liberty Bell.
Okay. I wasn't sure, who knows? Twenty second at Veterans Park.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.